All right. So we'll call the order, the August twenty first uh meeting of the town council study committee. So to kick off, I guess we'll take a motion to accept the agenda. So moved. All right. All in favor Curtis?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Bo?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Share votes on. All right. This is reminded everyone this meeting is being recorded. Uh that moves us to any approval of the minutes of August seventh. Everyone get a chance to review those at all.
I don't recall I got.
Or did we not get them?
Uh I did it. And then send it to you.
All right. Doesn't sound like they made it around. So we'll just carry that forward to the next time.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Anthony. For our continued discussion.
Uh thank you very much. We we have kind of I I feel like we sent you guys a lot of documents over the weekend, so we're gonna get into those. But first. Um at our last meeting, we sort of finished up article two um uh the town council provision. Um so I just want to do a quick um. Sort of review, we updated with all the suggestions from the committee onto that language. So I want to turn over to Pat to just do a quick review of that before we get into other elected officials. And and Pat, I have. I think the most recent version you you emailed around internally. Do you want me to share that?
That would be great. Thanks. And we we will send this to you. Um we just put together a draft, a clean copy. Of what we've discussed and added to date. So um. We already so as. We already incorporated um from the meeting prior to last into this draft. So Anthony, if you just want to scroll down. To the first part that's in red um. Section two point two B. I believe what you landed on was saying that um. No member shall hold any compensated appointed office within. A year following their service on town council, but we add it unless the one year period is waived by town council. Um I think that's where you landed as far as what you thought would be an appropriate response. And obviously town council will take into account any um. Conflict of interest provisions, et cetera. And oftentimes it, you know, it does require of requesting an opinion. From the Attorney General's Office. So this information allows the council to waive that one year requirement um. Next. Two point three. Um we took out reference to. The council president serving on the school committee. And further down under the town council's role, we added something with the liaison role. So if you scroll down to the next red section. Um I just kept in C that we'll be talking about appointment versus election of members. So um article two and three may be updated again once we settle on some elected and appointed. Boards and who whom would be doing the appointing. But we what I have done is added F. Um which states after each election, after the councillors elect have been sworn. The town council shall appoint from among its members. One liaison to the school committee to attend the school committee meetings, to report regularly to town council. And to facilitate coordination and communications between the school committee and town council for a one year term of office. And I understand that you might be doing some additional outreach to the school committee um. And possibly to the school committee chair um on this information. But this is a placeholder for now. This is some language that I think incorporates. Where you landed at the last meeting. Um if you want to scroll down, that that might be it for.
You want to comment on that?
Sure. One second. Patricia, we have.
Sure.
Comment?
Uh Curtis, I understand that Joe has uh reached out to Pauline Prowse. And Pauline was um. Interested in the concept and said that she would be discussing it. With other members of the school committee, whether there should be a liaison. So Joe has already talked to the chair of the school committee about the idea.
Any other thoughts from the?
Oh, are we? Caroline, are we? Are we planning to hear from them as a group?
Well, Joe is waiting for feedback from Pauline and to come back to us with. Their observations. I mean, this is preliminary, but since it was in there, I just. Wanted to recall, or I did recall that Joe. Said he had reached out to Paul. Nothing's happened. I don't even know if they had a meeting or. How it's been approached. Anyway, he has talked to. About yet.
That's all. All right. Patricia, back to you.
Thank you. Um if you can scroll down, that might, those might be the only. Things that required language changes. But if you can just check, yeah, that's it for article two. Um we've also included in this document the clean copy of article three um, which is the executive branch um. But we will.
You'll have that this one.
Oh.
Be another version I have.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's that's okay. We have it. It there's nothing changed in that. Um so there's nothing that we have to discuss this time. Um so that's it for review of article two. And um we can, you know. Wait until we have the discussion on elected versus appointed to make any additional modifications before you vote on it in its entirety.
Sure. Do we have this? Has this been sent to?
No.
We we will send it to you after the meeting because we have. A number of other things that we can put together with this. There may be some changes if we make some decisions about additional appointments by either. The executive or legislative branch.
Okay.
There are no.
Which will give meaning is a consolidated of two and three at this point. You'll you'll get both.
Right.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments on this? All right. Seeing none?
Okay, so. So the the next item on this agenda is um other elected officials and um we sent you a, we sent you a number of documents that one will, I think we'll spend the most time on today. Um is the draft language uh for other elected officials. We're gonna go through those in piece by piece. What I want to do before we get there um is to sort of talk about it at a high level. Um so. Let me back up. So. This is, this is in our work plan. This is the first of two meetings. Uh on elected and appointed officials. We start with elected officials because. In the charter process, there may be some elected positions that um as we'll see, no longer exist, or uh. The committee and the community might want to make appointed official. So it's better to have the elected officials. Discussion first than to have the conversation about appointed officials. Um to that end, one of the things that we that we're gonna sort of start with isn't is a framework. You don't have to sort of follow the framework, but it's just a framework about. How you might consider which positions are uh elected versus what positions are appointed. And then even within the um appointed officials uh conversation, then there's a conversation about who does the appointment. Um so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share screen. What I'm gonna share first is our framework for um. You know, our suggested framework for how you might want to think about as you're looking at these um positions. Uh making them elected versus appointed. Um and then we have some sort of. Research about certain aspects of a particularly competitive elections, which I'll which I'll share, we'll talk about briefly and we'll accept questions for it. Then we'll. Dig into the meat of the conversation, which will be the actual charter language. Um so. Uh any questions just on that um structure? I don't see any. So I will pull up. The framework first. So I'm not gonna gonna go through this. Sort of in my new detail. Um but just generally speaking, these are some of the areas that we recommend to uh committees and communities to. Look at as it considers whether a position is appointed or elected. Um. At a high level, again, this is a framework, so it doesn't mean that because, you know. A particular board or or um or elected position. Meets a certain number of them that they have to be appointed or have to be elected. It's just a framework for how you think about these things going forward. And just at a high level. Um policymaking authority. That's really sort of, are they generally making um decisions that are gonna affect the entire community over a long period of time? If they're doing a lot of that, then that sort of goes in the elected category. Do they have ministerial authority? That's, you know, are they issuing permits or maintaining documents? Again, if you're doing more of that or less of that, um the more you do, the more you might be appointed. Um training and expertise. Um elected officials are primarily. You know, one of the major benefits of elected officials is that they're bringing their experience. In addition to their membership of the community um to uh. An environment where individuals as, you know, the bureaucracy can is. Can think about the most efficient thing for it to do versus bringing the community um thought process into any type of decision making. So again, that that would um. If you want more of that outside perspective, that would sort of lean towards um that position being elected. Um the ease of the public. And I think this is the unique one, the ease of the public sort of evaluating whether they think that the. Official is doing the right thing. Um understanding. You know, with the when an auditor or sort of um sort of deeply financial position is doing might be different than understanding. Um for for example, in in um. Nantucket, if they think the moderator is properly moderating the meetings and allowing the discussion of love. So there's a dirt, the public would have a different level of understanding. They'd be directly impacted by both positions, but they they would sort of feel the impacts and understand them differently. Um. That and that goes to the evaluation of their performance. Um does the position, is it a part of the checks and balances of the community? Again, appointed positions are more like employees or they're subject to. The policymakers who are above them, or do you want to elevate this position one to be a check against another policymaker? Um. The efficiency of, you know, government operations. Is this someone who documents have to go through to get to someone else? Um. And excuse me. Lastly, and this is one that we're gonna, that we've got some more information on, which is. Uh. Are the, if it's an elected position, are there a lot of qualified candidates for the position? And are the races competitive? That is, do you have a a significant population of people? Um vying for these elections? If you have a hard time getting. The position elected or or you're filling these these vacancies, then again, I might say, we might want to make this an appointed position. The next thing I'm gonna go to, and I apologize for going quite kind of quickly. Um but I'm gonna just show you some information we've gathered about the competitiveness of elections for certain elected positions in Nantucket.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Refer to Curtis.
Um under the third item, the um. Difficulty in performing the work efficiently and so on. Um our experience. Here is that we really have highly qualified people who we appoint. So I don't think you're gonna get unqualified people coming up for appointment. I think we'll still draw from a pool of qualified people. So that's. Something I want to make sure we think about.
Anyone else have any thoughts? All right, Anthony.
Right. And then lastly, before we get into the memo. And this may generate some conversation as well. And I'm just gonna explain um this chart to you, and then we'll sort of go to um the details of it. So. This is the chart. We looked at about ten years worth of elections.
Yeah.
For these various positions in Nantucket. And what we did is we went through all the ballots um for the past ten years. And the numbers that you're seeing are basically a ratio. So if it's a board and there are two seats available for any particular election. Um how many candidates were there for for those seats? So the one does not mean that there was one seat. And one person ran. It just means that however many seats there were, there were at least, you know, there were, one means there's one person to fill that seat. A number higher than one, one means that there was more than one person who ran for those seats. And a number less than one means that. There was less than the number of, there were fewer candidates than needed to fill the seat. Um and then at the end of the chart. Um. Basically, the ten year average over ten years, were you more than likely to, was it more than likely to be a competitive seat? And then another thing I'll just point out to you briefly before we get into the um. Some of the, what the chart says is that. The dashes indicate um. Years where obviously there wasn't an election. Every seat does not come up for election every year. Um and then there are some blank spaces which were intentionally left blank. Uh to the extent that we weren't sure that we can get accurate data about what those elections were. When we did the averaging. The dashes and the blank spaces were not included in the average, so it shouldn't impact um our understanding of whether the seats were elected or appointed. Um so what does the chart say? Um. One, two. Three, four. Five of your elected positions uh. Looks like they're in races that are over the ten years.
Again. Point of order, uh Wisconsin Water Commission was merged with the Nantucket Water Commission, so it doesn't exist anymore.
Correct.
Married several years ago.
Yes, yes. We are aware that we, but it's it over this past ten years, we've got, you know, we had their information is included.
I'm a water commissioner, so I know.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
I don't there's any more discussion, but just of those positions, you know, you've got those seats. And again, we're gonna get into this and get into the moderator and to the um into the memo, but like the moderator. Again, the data says these are not necessarily competitive elections. Um. That also includes the housing authority um. The town clerk in the harbor shellfish advisory board. Um. When we crafted the draft language. We crafted it. As simply sort of mapping over the positions as they are. What they would be under a town council. So we kept all the elected positions elected in the draft charter. Um. But again, this is just information that you could consider if you wanted to sort of think about or consider. Different things for different positions. So I'll stop here. Uh if there are any questions about just the chart. Um. How we put together what it says before I get into the memo.
Sure, Caroline.
Thank you. Um I'm wondering if you could spell out the implication of. When there is no competition is. Uh signified by one, number one. And what kind of, or or when there is more, and if you could. Spell out the implication for us to consider this discussion in terms of going to the town council forum.
I'm I'm sorry, Caroline, could you say the last? I I got the first. Did last.
Stay next to the AC. So just if you could just spell it out a little bit more, the implications of what it means for us as we consider moving to town council form of government. When there are, there's a pattern here. I think you're suggesting that some of the boards and commissions. Don't seem to have competition for. The elections. And some of them have a bit more competition. What implication does that have for us in this conversation?
Sure. So um one of the things uh that people find important, particularly when they're looking at the elected versus. Versus appointed uh nature of of positions is the purpose of the election. Is that the voters are having a say in in who's making these decisions and for the voters to have a meaningful say um. There should be choices. In other words, candidates presumably with different perspectives or how they would do uh make decisions, you know, do a particular job. And so when you see that. There's, you you don't get options, then that means that, or you know, the inference is that the voters don't have an option. They don't have a. They don't really, even though they're voting, they don't necessarily have a choice um in sort of. Who the policymaker, what the policy will be um in the election. So. Again, we're not saying it's a hard and fast rule. It's just a part of the framework that you would consider, and you would say. There really isn't a choice being made. Um therefore, on the behalf of the voters, therefore, that might. Um weigh. In the uh area of a position being appointed um. As a. Um sort of maybe an anecdote, um town clerks um across um the state. Particularly in larger communities uh are tending to be appointed by either. Uh the city or town council. Um in some small communities, they're moving from elected to um hired by the um town manager or town administrator. Um whereas. And that's a sort of a slight trend, whereas historically town clerks have been a regularly elected position. Um so and this is, and I think one of those, one of the reasons for those could be. That they tend not to be um competitive elections. Um. Uh let me let um Pat or Mel chime in there. If they have anything to add.
I I would just add that what you're looking at is um. Going to be very unique to Nantucket. And uh because you're an island, there may only be so many people, town clerks, for example, available. In the area. Um in some other towns, you might be trying to draw from larger areas to have the most um qualified candidate. Um but as far as there being. Non-competitive elections, often the point is that if you're looking to. Have a more diverse set. And and a broader base of volunteers in your community. Um. You you can think about it in terms of. There's only one person running for this position. Would we have a greater? If they did not have to go through the election process and this was an appointed process instead.
Comment first. Uh it I believe in Nantucket, we've had sort of a tradition that. An assistant town clerk has been a town clerk in training, so they tended to progress up through the system. Uh as I recall, I don't know if that's totally accurate, but that's my perception.
Mr. Chair.
All right, Tom.
Yeah, I I Curtis is completely accurate on that. I mean, definitely want cooperation through Nancy and Laura, of course, but. This was also, this came up a few, a bunch of years ago and was. Resound resoundedly rejected um to have it appointed. So I think as as Pat said, that Nantucket is. Unique in this position and um I I don't think we should. Change the elected position unless that's something that the clerk's office feels strongly about. That's my personal opinion.
Agreed. Vote.
Uh this is a great chart. Uh one I hadn't thought about before, but basically showing the supply and demand within the community. For elected positions and. You know, it could go one way or the other. You could say. Like, we'll say shab, for instance, because that number is low. You could appoint those people and. Or you could say that there needs to be less people on that board. And effectively you go from seven to five. And that that ratio would go up. So I mean, there's two solutions to this problem. But um I I think it's fascinating. It's. Great to look at and. Great information, so.
Definitely. Yeah.
Just could also demonstrate that there was an awful lot of the members of the community that perceive the running. Against incumbents perhaps might not be a good use of their time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so true.
Just a a quick question for me. I I I know uh the Harvard Shelby Advisory Board, the enabling legislation through the state that created that board. Calls out for that to be. An elected board through that adopted act can through the charter. They be changed to be appointed?
You're creating a special act charter, which would be another um special act that will go through the legislature. So the short answer is yes.
Okay. I was just curious because I know those things overlap. So I just. Right here. Any other comments on the the chart specifically?
All right. So now we will get into the, what will be presumably the meat of the conversation. Um. The memorandum.
Joe's hands are up. Oh, sorry, Joe. Oh, no, that's not Joe's hand. That's just the pointer.
Uh so as I already explained, you know, we went through ten years of uh election data from Nantucket to make sure that we captured all of the elected. All of the elected um. Boards in in positions. Um you're not gonna see um as as a, as we've Curtis pointed out, the um. And I tried to say name the name because I will butcher it, the Siantic Water Commission. Um but all of the sort of existing um elected positions. Um. And so we will do it sort of the same way we've done the other um articles in um that we brought before the committee. We've drafted the draft language is basically sort of a a mapping over of what you currently have to what it will look like in the town council charter. And we have the decision point um for you um for the committee. So uh the school committee, uh we've got a composition of. Five members, which uh uh the school committee currently has. Uh the term of office, we have three years. Um. And I won't sort of read the language verbatim, but it's three, it's uh three years staggered in such a way that they are overlapping. Um. We have some general language here about their authority to manage um public schools in um Nantucket. Um the appointment of certain officers, but particularly the um the chair and uh the clerk. And so that's sort of it in a nutshell. Um and we can go through any of the language that you guys find it is important. Um and. While we have some placeholder language in article two, I did have the um. Marker here, the decision marker for. Does the committee think a member of the town council should actually sit on the committee? I think if you're gonna have a liaison. Um. That language is appropriately sitting in the um. Uh in the town council article and doesn't in, there need not be a reference to it here on the school committee article. Uh but that again, that's up to the committee. Um so I'll stop there and open it up to any questions.
I don't think it belongs in the school committee. A liaison is a liaison, not a member.
Anyone else have any?
Um.
Agree.
Oh, all right, Caroline.
Um. Let me see if I can say, we're saying that. If we put a, we decide to put a. Town councillor on the school committee that we are having them be. Non-voting. Is that what we're saying?
I'm saying liaison. You sit in, you talk, and you exchange information.
Why wouldn't we have them be a voting?
Because they're not elected to the school committee. They're elected to the town council.
Okay, and is that at Colin Center, is that like in a mayoral form of government when the. Mayor is sitting on a school committee, is that a non-voting position in those cases?
Uh it varies. Um in in traditional mayoral forms of government, the mayor is a voting member. And again, it varies by community, but I I'd say that. It tips in the direction of if the mayor's on the school committee, that person is a voting member. Um often the default chair and then the uh committee will vote for his chair and a clerk or secretary. Um in. Council manager forms, um there's, I think, more divergence, but um there are cases where a council member sits. Um as an elected member of the um. Of the committee. Uh Pat, I think you did a little bit more research on that uh. Counselor on committee part. I don't know if you want to add anything there.
Sure. Um the vast majority um do not have the council president as a voting member. However, a handful do. Um a couple of them have them as voting members and there's one um in which they're an ex officio member. Um and where there's actually a mayor on on the school committee um. The mayor's office has access to a lot of resources where they could also handle being the chair and um. Doing the, you know, making, being in charge of the coordination and the posting and and things like that. Um. In a town council role, the town council does not ne- generally have as much staff as the mayor would have to to help out with that. So that may explain some of the difference there. Um but we we have encountered places where the mayor is on the school committee, but voluntarily decides not to vote, except. In the case of a tie. Um so things are worked out that aren't necessarily in the charter as well. Um.
Pat, to clarify, the the vol- under the charter, they do have the ability to vote, correct?
Yes. Um, yes. Uh within the mayoral form, but in the town council form, um I think we found that three out of the. Twelve or thirteen town councils actually have council presidents sit on the school committee.
All right, Joe. Just curious, Tom, Tom, you expressed your opinion that the. The uh town councillor would not have a voting role. I was just interested in hearing more about your opinion.
Yeah, I I agree with with what Kurt, excuse me, I agree with what Curtis said. Um I I don't know what. What issue we'd be trying to solve and wouldn't want to encroach on another elected board's position. I think the the goal would be to. As we were talking about last meeting, to have maybe if one of the councillors wasn't, as said, appointed a liaison, that they could go and talk about budget matters and then come back and report to the council. Sort of like. Sort of like we do in select board comments and committee reports now. A, a, as I said, nothing has ever crossed my desk besides the wider budget and town meeting stuff in, in, in my time in select board. And theoretically in town, in, in this scenario, it would be a counselor's job to come back and once a month or what, once every two months or whatever to report on, oh, the school committee is up to X, Y, and Z, et cetera. That, that's all as I see it. I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to do anything beyond that.
Can I also have any thoughts for this?
Usually there's somebody on the negotiations.
Joe. Joe.
I, I think that we have a history here on this island. It's a long history and the history is that we have a school committee that's been elected. And like Curtis said, the town council has been elected to the town council, but for them to be on the school committee, have their presence and to fly at 30,000 feet and to be able to, you know, collectively talk about what's happening between the school and, and the town is really important, but I don't think that they need to, I, I, I don't want to change too much of how things have been going here. And I think that's been a core goal of our group from the beginning.
Agreed.
I would say unless the school, unless the school committee themselves came back and said, we wouldn't want that person.
Right.
No, but I think we can revisit that discussion if they, if they did come back.
Yeah, when Joe gets back with some feedback, I think a liaison sounds like a great idea, but not voting.
Yeah, I'll move on to town clerk. And actually, I'm sorry, before I move on to town clerk, I should have said this earlier. One position that is currently elected in Nantucket that you're not going to see here is the position of moderator. That, you know, there's no longer going to be a town meeting, so that position no longer exists. So I just wanted to say that to open up if there wanted to be any conversation, if anyone wanted to have a conversation on, on that particular.
I would like to comment, the interesting thing is the last person who ran for town moderator against Sarah Alger was me. And I, she beat me hands down. And I called her at seven o'clock the next morning. I said, Sarah, thank you for ruining. And a great moderator, but I was the last person who stood for moderator against Sarah.
When was that?
About 48 years ago, as far as I know. No, I think, what, 20 or so? Forever. And we're good friends and, and we laugh about it all the time. Best thing that ever happened was not winning that election.
Just on that note, Curtis, that's a very good point that you brought forward. So just as, as we say, the town has made its own choices.
Yeah.
Has made a good choice with Sarah.
Absolutely.
And, and you, and you, and you threw your hat in as everybody does and realized that it was a waste of time because Sarah does a good job. That's called elections. That's called
Yeah, and her dad was, her dad was moderator in Barnstable. So she grew up for 50 years with the moderator job in her family.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Tom.
Just as a minor aside, if the Collin Center isn't aware, there's a homeroom petition that passed Springtown meeting that sends a basket of charter changes up to the State House for, for legislative approval. And one of them came out of the town government study committee, which I think Curtis has commented on this actually in previous meetings, which changes the moderator's term from one year to, one year to three years. So just as, just as an aside, that's, that, that is something that's out there happening now.
But that would only happen if we don't adopt the town council, I assume.
Yeah, just an aside.
Yeah, no. Okay, thank you.
All right, Anthony, back to you.
All right. So now we're moving on to the town clerk. This is actually pretty standard language. I'll, I'll put out that school committee and town clerk really exist in any robust form in your existing charter. So this is sort of standard language that we pulled from similarly sized communities. So the town clerk, this language talks that it's elected from voters at large, basically any voter in the town to a three-year term. It talks about some of the general powers and duties of the town clerk regarding licenses. A lot of what town clerks do is actually governed by various portions of state law, but also you know, the council through ordinance can sort of regulate certain things to the, to the town clerk. Most town clerks across the state, I wouldn't say most, in the council form of government, most town clerks are also the clerk to the council. That is, they're the record keeper of the council meetings and so on and so forth. So there wasn't really this, we didn't put in a decision point because it's fairly standard, but I'll stop here and entertain any questions or comments.
Maybe it is. I know we already touched on it, talked a bit, so. Unless anyone else has any other comments, we'll be moved. All right.
So this is, this is one of the, when we talk about sort of Nantucket being unique, the historic district commission in Nantucket created to be early 20th century. What we did here is we looked at that language, the special act language. We cribbed some of the most important parts from there to include in the charter and included at the end, a reference to the most recent version of the historic district commission language under special act. So basically this would codify the special act in your charter and then, and not override it, but refer back to what is already in state law. It's very lengthy. That's one of the reasons why we didn't sort of take the entire thing. One of the things we wanted to provide to the board was that since its initial inception, the state has created a fairly robust statute around historic district commissions. The state statute that governs this activity does not have these as elected positions. So that's, that's sort of one thing that would be different. So we just put the decision point in to say, do you want to continue to refer back to your special act or at least for you guys to think about it, to consider referring, continuing to refer your special act or looking at the just having a reference to the state law.
Can you send us a copy of the state law in the next package?
We can do that, yes.
I'd like to see what it says.
Any other thoughts or comments?
Sure.
Chair. Does anyone know why the town manager elects associate members? I don't hear. It's been the way it's always been.
Was there a special act done?
So the most recent special act is the Acts of 1970. We actually have a copy of it, so I can send that to the committee to review. I, I considered sending all of the special acts to the committee. I didn't want you to read a book over the weekend. But we can do that for this, but it's been, it's, it's, the town manager has been appointing the associate members since at least the 1970s.
Are they referred to the select board along the, all the committee stuff to for discussion before they're appointed?
I don't believe so, no.
So they're, they're like alternates?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're like members in training.
But so many of the select board committees, you know, people apply, give their credentials and then they're reviewed by the board. And then we I, I didn't realize that the town manager just appoints names without discussion. Interesting. Have we done that?
Yes, Tom.
And unless I'm completely mixing up my appointment things here, I'm pretty sure the select board appoints the associates. I seem to remember voting for Carrie not that long ago. There's just so much info that I can't keep it all in my head, but I don't think the, I don't think the town manager appoints them.
Check.
Oh, I remember, I have.
Oh, Carolyn.
I remember because I was at that select board meeting and they were voted on by the select board.
Yeah.
Well, let me pull up the, I'll pull up the special act because I mean, they may do it, but it may not be covered by the I mean, again, the, this is a position that's not in your charter. It's under the, it's a special act. So let me pull that up.
I guess was pulling it up, I guess my two senses. I, I think this is a chance where again, if we're looking at the charter, it's our choice to decide
Yeah.
who's going to be appointing those associate members or if they should be elected. I, I think.
Or if there were any, if there are any associates.
I think if the select board is doing it now, we can certainly decide whether it should be under the new system, the town manager, or they should be elected like the other members. I think that's the decision that the college is wanting us to debate and decide.
It's a decision item.
They're, they're listed under the 20, 23 and 24th committee opening for the select board to accept applications review and so.
So Mr. Chair, so.
Oh.
No, that's. So I'm looking at the chart, it's a 1.25 ratio. And I can understand why they did that. Because if you have any member of the commission out, you really need to keep the business going, so to speak.
And you have to have an odd number to vote.
Yeah. No problem. So I think it's probably a smart thing, probably. If we were to keep it congruent with what we have currently, we just substitute town manager for town council.
Good point. Can you clarify what you just said?
So if there are alternates, right, so three people are associate members or alternates, basically. So if let's say one HGC member is gone on vacation.
Or recuses because they have
Or recuses. Perfect. So you, you and I go get, you know, we, we get permits. That business has to keep running. All right, or, or, you know, people are that's what I'm saying. The business of the HGC needs to keep going. And so you need people to be in the alternate position. And without electing them because you're really electing the people that are most, that are making the most decisions. You're just, you're appointing an associate member, which is an alternate, which I think makes sense. Because you have to have, you have to have alternates. And you have to have, and you have to have elected members, which is what the community, community really controls. So I think this makes sense.
Really want to stay with what works and keep, just tune it up better.
Okay.
I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what they're saying, though, is it? Well, I, I, I don't think they're changing the idea of what the HGC is doing. I think they're just trying to, or, or the suggestion for the HCC continues with its alternatives. But I think that you read what they're saying is with, instead of the alternate being selected by select board, the, the system will stay in place. It'll just be decision-appointed authority is what they want to find out.
Yeah, the appointing authority for the alternates, which is the associate members, is the council. So if we just you know, if we're just taking one system and moving it out.
Well, I, I don't want to take too much time to, to do, so does the committee want me to change from appointed to elected or appointed by the select, by the
Well, I think Tom Dixon's point that the town manager doesn't appoint ought to be checked first. And then the, the appointing authority would be the town council if, if that's implemented. But in other words, that item may be incorrect, Anthony.
All right, Carolyn.
So what we think it is, is that the select board votes on appointing the three alternate members. And what we are, and if that is correct, we would like that to be corrected in that, in the statement. And then we are deciding whether we would have the town council appointed or if we would have the town manager appointed. And those are two different things. And I'm not sure I've figured out what the group is coming to. I think it should be to say the same, it should be, it's the new town manager should be appointing the town council.
You do need alternates is what.
Yes, and I.
Our charter says five elected, three associates filled by appointment by the select.
So, well, I guess the, the question then is, right, is if it's filled by the, the select board currently, do we want that executive function to stay with the town manager? Or go to the town council? Or I think in my mind's eye, a little bit to me for processing a little bit, there's also the third choice of appointed to, by the town manager to be ratified by the council to provide some level of check on those appointments. Because right now if the select board appoints you, you're appointed. There's no check
Yeah.
on that, other than voters voting in and out, select board members at a later date of time. I think if you said we're going to have associate members appointed by the town manager, and in that, to get appointed, it also required ratification or acceptance by the council, you provide a check on that to make sure that it was on.
I think that that point is very valid for all appointments, that if the town manager presents a recommendation for appointment, the council should ratify. So that's a step that sort of redundant, but, but improves it from that point of view. So that's a question that we ought to be tossing around in this process.
Well, I think that was the leftover question from the earlier sections for committee appointments is if it was going to be appointed by the town manager, we wanted to have that additional check.
I love the idea.
We wanted to go to the council to do it, so.
It's a good idea.
Yes, Tom.
If I may make, if I may make a suggestion, there, the HGC went through its independent review, which came to the select board a couple of months ago, and there is some there's going to be some further I don't know, deliberation or whatever from that review, including some possible charter changes, perhaps. I, I would, I would say that maybe the chair and vice chair should, should kind of get to suss that out a little bit. Because I think there were some thoughts coming out of that independent review of what could or couldn't be done. And I don't think we'd want to put something in a placeholder, present it to the voters and then everybody did, or some people to be like, oh, well, we were in this process already. So I, I think we should, I think we should put this in the so-called parking lot, as we said on the STR subgroup for, for now, until some more info comes along.
Well, actually, I pulled up the most recent amendment to the to the special act creating the historic commission in 1990, relatively recently. And let me share here. So it actually says that two of the associate members should be elected at the annual town meeting.
At the annual town meeting? Well, we're not doing that for sure.
That is so interesting.
Yeah, I think that's not.
I never saw us do that before. Wow.
I, I guess this is probably not the most recent amendment. That's my guess, Anthony.
Yeah, that, I know the HGC legislation was amended in 2014 and 2016, and my guess is that it's in there. And I'm sure it's on the E code 360.
Yeah, it, it is, Tom.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly what our current charter says. Says amended by ST 2014, chapter 338, ST 2016, chapter two.
All right.
Even so, what we're doing is taking it back to this. Town, town meeting becomes the town council and they're going to appoint this person, but how you phrase that, if you want to give some leeway so that so that the town manager appoints him. Is that what you're saying, Tom?
I'm not suggesting anything. I just think there's some, there's more info that needs to be gotten on this because of the independent review and that there's, there's many different thoughts about what should and shouldn't happen. And I don't know all of them. I haven't been involved in that.
Well, I, I think if I made time, it may make some sense, right, if that independent review also suggests a different number of associates to get that recommended number probably captured correctly too.
Homework, more homework.
Sorry, better work for paper.
Okay.
Moving on.
All right.
So.
Keep it on.
And I just want to make sure for, for our notes that, so we're going to look at the homework on to We're gonna look at the homework on to. The. Appointed versus elected for the associate members. Um, but I also hear you say, Jeff, that you want to look into the number of members on the commit, on the committee?
I I think if we may, we'll try to get in touch with the the chair and staff. Folks from the H D C to get. A copy of the latest set of recommendations from their internal review.
Okay. So, following this, there is the Nantucket Housing Authority. Again, this one is. A fairly standard placeholder, it references the um. Chapter state law that creates um housing authorities across the state, so this references. The existing number of members on that, on that um board, which is five. Um, and then it refers the reader back to um that chapter of state law, which defines. How they're appointed, in this case elected, um, and their terms and so on and so forth.
Keep moving. Anyone ever do comments on that? All right.
The Nantucket land bank is similar, um, with the main difference being that it refers to a special act uh that creates the Nantucket land bank. Again, the article, or sorry, the language in the charter references um the existing number of members, five. Um, and then it refers the reader back to the special act that creates the body um for their, again, in this case, they're elected for how they're appointed. Their terms and so on.
Part B is housing authority under land bank, something screwed up.
Excuse me?
Part B says housing authority, not land bank.
Oh, that's on us, we will correct that.
Is a chapter and the act, the correct chapter and act relating to the land bank. That looks like it is in reference, but anyway, sadly, I know that's actually correct. Okay, that ain't the land.
We'll double check that.
You see the typo, don't you?
Correct, yeah, I do.
Okay.
Carol?
Um, I'm just trying to clarify, how do those five board members?
They're elected.
So all the, all the, all the uh boards that we're looking at here, they're all elected, so even though it doesn't. Explicitly say it here in the charter language, it refers back to the, to the act, the special act, which uh creates these five elected positions.
Okay.
And just for clarity, one of these positions um are actually appointed by the governor, so. There are the the election, the positions that you see on your um annual ballot. Those are like, the the positions particularly appointed by Nantucket are elected positions.
Who's on the land bank that's appointed by the governor currently?
Oh, I apologize, I'm actually, I'm actually thinking of the housing authority. These are all elected positions.
Okay, thank you.
Closer. All right, moving on to the harbor and shellfish advisory board.
All right, so similar for the uh harbors. Nantucket Harbor and Shell Force, Shellfish Advisory Board, um, this is language taken from uh. With with the um, what Nantucket currently has, um, so. This is one of the ones where I think um, sort of already pointed out, this falls into sort of one of your more um. I'm sorry, one of your less competitive um uh races under the chart. This is a below one, sort of one for every election, so point nine eight. The committee exists, uh consists of two. Yeah. Three members elected at a regular election.
So Jeff, do you, have you all ever done a review of this? With natural resources, um.
Of Shab?
Yep, or have you guys ever talked about them being appointed instead of elected? It seems like people throw their name in the hat kind of late sometimes, and it ends up being a writing campaign, I mean. I think the chart that Anthony had was interesting, but maybe didn't reflect some of those last minute. Uh, names.
So I I guess I'll I'll let Curtis go first.
Oh, well, um. Does the Shab recommend the harbor master? Cause that's what it says, I thought that came through town admin.
They, they provide some, or historically it provide a little bit of review, but they're not directly. Involved in the the hiring. Cause that's been, like you said.
Recommendation to, so it's recommendation after a name is presented or something. I just want to be sure it doesn't imply that Shab. Brings forward the name.
No, they do not. To kind of answer Jill's question from our perspective, I'm gonna go a little bit broader. I I personally tend to think that boards that are advisory boards make sense to be appointed.
I agree.
That they're providing advice too. I mean, I know this specific act is from the seventies, I think it's from seventy-eight or seventy-nine. And I know the climate around town government was probably very different then. And I also know there have been questions through the years and issues raised for. You know, commercial fishermen being on the on the board and potentially being in conflicts, but it. In my mind's eye, they've always been. Advisory, they don't make regulatory decisions, they don't make policy decisions, they certainly. And we work with them in in natural resources to update things like shellfish regulations that then. Go as a recommendation to the select board for review and potential adoption, but they don't. Directly adopt.
They don't adopt.
So, um. I I know there'll be a few members on that board that like the idea that they're selected by the people and are elected, like I think all elected boards do, but. I don't know, I I always feel that way for advisory boards, that if they're advising the board, that board should then pick the people. That are most helpful for them to get advice. Anyone else have any thoughts on this?
So I completely agree with you, Jeff, thank you, completely.
So I, my my thought was, I I think this board could go to appointed.
Yeah.
I could do that.
Well.
Should we also lower, it looks like the interest is not here, so this is one of the zeros. Yeah, so we, should we lower that seven five? Or is there problems now, Jeff?
Now, I mean, they they've had elections where, and I, Jill surprised it pretty well, where there's been. Not enough names on the ballot, and then it will turn into writing campaigns and things like that, where people start in the last week. I also know specifically from reading the results, there was one election that. The highest vote getter was a cartoon character for that and during write-ins. So I, to me, I think that that also.
Speaks to a point.
Speaks to a point, um. I think moving it from elected to appointed and then reducing the number to. I think the sitting board will probably. Not be super keen on that idea, um. But I'll leave it to the group for discussion.
Have you ever had less than seven members? Or have you always at least been able to build a member seats?
Over time, we've always been able to fill the member seats, I think there has been once or twice where they've used that, uh. Appointment to fill stuff post-election, uh. But I'd have to really dig into.
That wouldn't even be a.
Yeah, it's not really.
This is one of the ones that's below one on the chart. They haven't had enough candidate.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Moving along.
So what's the consensus there?
Is there any other thoughts on wanting to go elected or appointed?
I'm in favor of appointed.
Same.
I would only say that if you move from elected to appointed, you keep. The term staggered as they, or they exist, are their terms staggered?
Oh, yeah, they're on the three-year terms.
Yep.
They do the.
So it looks like in the charter, initially, they were like, one was one year, two or two years, three, and then everybody was three years after. The admission assumption will allow the staggering, it's not the only thing, it's to make sure that it's not everybody's appointed at the same.
I feel like they're on a three, two and two.
Yeah.
Cycle right now. All right, so I think the consensus goes that this would move to the appointed list.
And would you also like to change the the size from seven to five, or are you keeping it at seven? In in the calls language.
I think we keep it at seven.
That way we don't upset him too much, so.
And who would be making that appointment, uh, in this case? I think. For myself, I think if it's in the same system where it's town manager to be ratified by the council, whole.
Point should have to be ratified.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
All right, well. I think maybe differentiate. If that's a legislative or a regulatory advisory board, else. Who does Shab? Advise typically?
Typically, Shab currently advises the select board.
Okay, so they're they're requiring executives because they're not making legislation, correct? So they're. In the policy area of. Uh, using the existing legislation. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so then, I suppose that would be an executive. This is the way I see it, it would be an executive decision to advise or to select these people to advise them. So in that case, that would be on your system.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Tom.
Uh, maybe that, maybe this is obvious, but I I would say it should be exactly like us appointing the tree advisory committee or something. Where the town council would take names and they would apply, and they would come in and. And introduce themselves, like, like people are, we're voting on committees tonight, and they would be appointed to their advisory board. It, it seems, seems like a direct carryover from what we already do now, it's just changing Shab from elected to appointed.
Wouldn't it be that they would apply to the town manager? And then those recommendations would go to the council? Is that what we're talking about on how to get there?
Well, I I think it's, this may be semantics, it's kind of six, maybe in the li- literally how it's written in the charter, but it's six and duh, six of one, half and dozen of the other, I mean, they. They apply to the town now. It's just the select board who selects them, so whether it's the town manager who they're applying to, and then the town council ratifies, it's. Six of one, I think.
Wouldn't it be a veto, though, if it's a ratification, just a vote? Yes or no?
Well, applications are applications, you would, they would, they would have to be posted in a public packet, and then they would, in, they would come in. In theory, introduce themselves at a town council meeting, and those names would be exactly like my little sheet right here for tonight. Um, they'd be posted and there'd be a a time for uh for them to be voted on at an appropriate time.
Why don't you explain?
I I think mine's a little bit different, or at least how I'm picturing it, is that the application process, I think, would still be the same where you apply to the town. And then I think after reviewing all of the applications, and that obviously they're submitted to the town, so they'd be public documents and could be made available. The town manager would be selecting. Who they felt were the most qualified individuals to go on to those boards. And then that list would be presented to the town council for a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
And they could adapt or change if the town council vote necessary.
Correct.
Okay.
But I'm on your system.
Tom has a point, though, because. What if you, the town manager presents a list and. This, the town council says, we don't like this list, go make another list.
That's their job.
Okay, so you're.
For another list, okay.
I mean, it it kind of is semantics. In way, in a way, um.
It's a process.
Yeah. Okay, go make another list, so you take one person off that they don't like, and then you put another person off.
You suggest somebody else.
Okay, so you're.
All right, go ahead, Tom.
That sounds like you get into transparency issues, because the I, and not, not that anybody in the town manager's role would or wouldn't disclose if somebody asked. Or whatever, but why, why wouldn't it just be exactly what you have now, which is whoever submits for. Capcom or whatever is is posted in in the select board's packet in appropriate time, they come and introduce, and there's a whole timetable, and then we vote. With our little slips of paper like we'll do tonight, and it's all transparent, I don't see the reason for another layer for the town manager or whoever to weed those out. To me, that that just, that that sounds like you're asking for trouble.
All right, Jill?
I feel the same way, I feel like why would we have a special, why are we having a different process for Shab? Than we are for everyone else, I don't exactly understand that.
All right, Mel?
Yeah, I I'm not sure we're having a different process since we do, I don't think we have a process, um. The, under the proposal of the select board, which made all the appointments, most of the appointments previously, will not exist any longer, and so I think we're having the discussion. About about, um, you know, what is the best replacement for the select board? But, uh, you know, and the discussion you're having is exactly the discussion that we hear all the time, it's about, uh. Efficiency versus uh transparency. And uh, so you know, I think the big difference is, frankly, if the town manager was. To make these appointments, even subject to ratification, there would be no public interviews. Uh, there may be names that of applicants, but the idea where the town manager would not have uh public interviews. Um, so, you know, that's about the efficiency side. Do you want to take uptown council meetings of interviews of boards and committees? If that's your tradition, and that's the way, uh, you know, it feels right to you, then then you should do that. You should transfer.
Perhaps it could be like we do uh for the current licensing board, where the town select board meets. As a licensing board, and for committee appointments, there could be a meeting set aside. For people to come and introduce themselves and talk and, and um, then after those. After that meeting, then the town manager can make the appointments. Just to get everyone in to in the loop.
If, if I'm, if I may, um, under the sort of process that Jeff outlined. With the town manager being the appointing authority, the way it usually works in these types of situations is. The applications are submitted to the, to the, to the administration and whichever, you know, however they um sort of post to say that we have an opening on this board or commission. And then the town manager will say, I want, you know, if there's two positions, I want these two people to fill the positions, they will go to the. To the council, um, on just those two names. Um, it's not required, but it's often the practice that the um candidates will be present at the town council meeting. Um, and it may be requested that they sort of briefly introduce themselves, but that's not necessarily, that's not necessary, and then there's usually an up or down vote on the appointments. If the appointments fail, um. Um, which I think would be unusual in most communities, um, if if there's a good relationship between the town manager and the council. Then it would be on the manager to submit additional names or or new names, replacements.
So that's the system that Jeff outlined.
I I, Mr. Chair, I'm just one person, but I I like the system we have now, I do not think adding a layer with the town manager makes any sense for transparency sake. Um, I think it should be all open, and the council, in this case, should decide based on whoever applies. You know, and and we, the the feedback that we get, yeah, some people don't, of course, don't like. Our, the appointments that we actually do or do not make, of course, occasionally, but, but the process is is pretty good. And I I would, I would strongly suggest we, we sit, we um, carry that over into the town council system.
Jill?
Uh, yeah, I agree with that. And also, I think I've mentioned this before. To me, what's great about the boards that we have and the process. It introduces them to the public. They're kind of, um, some of these people go on to run for office. And it's kind of a good recruiting ground to have people on these boards to do that. And we want good people to run for office, so. I think them having a little public exposure and having that public exposure. You know, with elected officials, I love this process, to be honest with you. So I, I I like how it is. I think it's good. And there's a lot of accountability for, um, Tom and his colleagues, actually. I mean, they get lots of feedback about these votes, guys, lots.
Alright, Mel. Mel, you're on mute.
I just wanted to clarify with Tom. Tom, you had previously, uh, indicated that the select board. Has delegated certain appointment authority, limited appointment authority to the town manager for certain committees. Uh, is that something that, um? I I can't recall exactly the ones. I believe there were about three or four. Is that something we should carry over or? Uh. Which ones were they, by the way?
Yeah, it's like the Committee on Disability and Park, Park and Parks and Rec are appointed by the town manager. And I think it's five, if I remember correctly. I I read them off in that meeting a couple of months ago. Um, I can cobble them together very quickly, but, um. Yeah, and those, those were done for different reasons over the years. Um, definitely need to talk to Lib, Libby, Greg or Rick about exactly the reasons why. Um, that's, I guess that's something that the committee could just, could. Our committee could talk about about the specific ones, but, um, they seem to work pretty well. Having those committees, um, appointed by the town manager for for whatever reasons. Um, tha- that has happened in the past.
Curtis, then I'll go to you, Jill.
I think we should be consistent in the way we're doing it. So if certain committees. Are appointed by the town manager and others are, uh, by the select board, I think they should, we should evolve to a system for appointing. And that's a discussion we should pursue.
Sure, Jill.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, Parks and Rec is a good one where I I hope that the town council will appoint the Parks and Rec Board, but. It's ins to be an ever growing, uh, field, no pun intended, on, um, the docket, so. Uh, and I think we should talk about all those. Um, appoint, appointments by the town manager. But yes, I'd like to know, there, there could be really valid reasons why they do it that way, and I don't know what they are.
Appreciate it. Alright. Again, I'll just remind, I mean, I. Again, I I threw it out there for appointed especially. I'm not gonna certainly die on the hill for. Who's gonna be the appointing authority. I I do think with that, though, is. With it, you know, seemingly staying with town council. Um. I mean, I I guess we'll rely on citizens having the ability to. Deal with decisions of the council is kind of a check, but I I do think it. If we're talking about moving advisory boards to being appointed. I I would like to at least throughout for the group, having a discussion about. The regulatory boards that we're not talking about on this list and whether they should remain appointed or go to elected.
I don't want to beat it to death, but if I'd really like to recommend that if we're gonna do that. We have a special meeting of the council and that's a board appoint, advisory board appointment meeting. That's the agenda for the meeting. Right now, we go through two or three iterations of committee appointments with the select board. It keeps. Coming and coming and coming. It's not one list. So. If, like I said, with the licensing board, if we just say this meeting is for committee appointments, that's the agenda. Bingo. That could work.
Oh, but to your point. It's more efficient. For the town manager. And I.
There are. I hear you, but I'm listening to all these people who like to.
Yes, I know. And I was in originally in the camp of, let's just elect everybody. Because then it's more transparent, you know, and there's, you take the politics out. But there are certain things that, you know, maybe it's just. There you, there's, you have to have a town manager be like, hey, these are the people that are gonna advise me on this. And it's a simple board. It doesn't really impact much. And so I, maybe the. What I'm saying is, let's just take it on a case by case basis. So that's what I'm saying.
Right, well. A good discussion, I, yeah, it's healthy.
Alright, Joe.
Yeah, again, guys, we're paying, I mean, I I hope that we're gonna pay the town council. Good money, but by the end, I mean, that that's what I hope comes out of this as well. So they gotta have more accountability. And the more transparency we have where they're taking votes on people, the more accountability there will be. So this is a good thing for them. To do that. And actually, and I don't know, I'm I'm sure Anthony and Pat and Mel understand this, but. These advisory boards, they often, they are important. They do do wonderful work and they are kind of. Not just kind of, I mean, they're policy advisors. They're like legislative aides to a lot, to a large extent. Um, you know, some committee, some boards are different than others and, um, operate in different ways depending on who's on them. But that's exactly why I like it. And also, members of the public go to these. Committees and again, this is a chance for them to get to know them, so they're more comfortable going to the committee that they might need to appear before if. They have something they want to bring up. I. I I like it all being out there. So to me, the transparency overrides the efficiency, just in my own personal view.
Just to sort of s- s- keep the conversation centered, we're, so we're going through. What Nantucket currently has elected. It sounds like there's a consensus around making the Harbor and Showfish Advisory Board. An appointed, uh, uh, board, um, and then we're gonna spend time on the appointed boards. It sounds like there's, um. And and we can certainly, I I guess you could take it, um. You could do it, uh, sort of piecemeal, uh, but it sounds like there's an interest in having as many boards appointed by the new. Um, you know, the proposed town council than by, um. The town manager, if I'm, if I'm hearing the conversation.
Yeah. Let's try it that way and see what happens. In discussion.
Alright, moving on.
Alright, so the next one is the planning board. Um, again, this is, um. I I'll sort of do a little, um. Um, a little FYI, um, um, that will explain the decision point a little bit better, so, um. Planning boards are are across Massachusetts are governed by chapter forty eight, um, section eighty one A of chapter forty, chapter forty one of the Massachusetts general laws. This, the, the law kind of only allows for two different, the law only, only creates two different categories. If you are, if you're a city, and again, our definition of city is, is, um. Uh, any organization that has a town council versus a town, which is, uh, makes legislative decisions through town meeting. If you are. Uh, if you are a town, um, you have to have, or at least the, under the state law, it says. Your, uh, planning board members are elected. That's probably one of the reasons why you have, why you have an elected planning board. If you have a council, I mean, it really only talks about. The mayor, but it says the mayor will, uh, appoint these members of the, um, planning board. We have, uh, found. I think two, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, but two other communities that have town councils similar to which you're, you're forming. That have created a, um, oh, that have kept their planning boards elected. Um, and so we've sort of mapped that language. Over to, um. Uh, we're to, um, for Nantucket for this particular charter. But I, but I would say that it's, it's rarer for a council former government to have a, um, elected planning board, um. Uh, versus appointed by the, um, by the administration.
Curtis, um, once again, the, um, town county, uh, mix comes to play, um. Is is that gonna give us a problem on the, uh? The, uh, planning function or plan, is, are we talking planning board or planning commissioner or both or either?
We're talking the planning board, um.
Cause I'm, I keep wondering how we're gonna merge the county and town. Um, under the other system.
So we're keeping track of that. I don't think this changed, um, I think, well, we, we looked at the, um. The Nantucket, um, I'm gonna ruin the acronym, um, uh, Planning and Economic Development Commission. Um, the planning board members are by default members of the, um, of the commission. So I don't, uh, we, we are, we do have sort of opinion that we will. Once the charter is, um, in place, to go back and make sure that we, um. Cover all the parts of the commission, but I don't think in first glance that. Um, cause you're not changing, I mean, unless. You're not changing the number, you're just changing, um, whether you could in theory change whether they're elected or appointed, but. One of their roles in Tucket, um, would still be to sit as members of the, on the planning commission.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Tom.
This is a, the same case as the HGC, um, the select board appoints the associate members. I voted for Howard Matts like three weeks ago or four weeks ago.
Alright, Carolyn.
I was curious, Anthony, which were the towns that you referenced? That, um. Uh, are like Nantucket in this regard?
Franklin, I know is one, and and, um, Pat, do you know the other one?
Uh, Palmer. Has an elected planning board. Um, I think that's, that's all I said.
Yeah, Franklin and and Palmer.
Any other comments on this one? Yeah. If it's a life and now I think you can keep it. As is myself.
The only thing is, B says HGC. Not planning board, yes.
Copy and paste.
I'm not touching. My, my only, my question.
Joe.
Sorry. When are we gonna talk about how the zoning works and get in depth on that? I don't know when that's on our agenda. La- is that later this fall or something? Um, you know, planning board has their own set of laws that they're following in the state, whether it's, you know, in our subdivisions or whatever. Addressing, somebody wants a double curb cut, all that, and there's a lot, those meetings are long. They do a lot. But on the zoning, how would that work? Are we, I mean, it. See, we talked about people going to them to maybe ask for a zoning change, or maybe planning board's gonna recommend a larger zoning change in an actual zone. And so then those things they would vote on and then send it to the town council is kind of how I understood. This would work. So in some ways, planning board could be taking on a lot more work, um, with public requests. I I don't know how many there would be, but. I am trying to figure that out.
So under, under the, this, this proposed language, the planning board has the same, um. Powers and duties and authority that it currently has. So so nothing about what it does changes. Um, it is true that under your current former government, um, the town meeting is the, is the legis, is the legislative body. But now you have a town council, so as you said, the. To the extent they have recommendations, they would go to the town council. The council as a legislative body would be making decisions about the zoning ordinance, um, amendments there to. The planning board is usually situated in a position of making recommendations or reviewing, um, proposals. Um, so. To the extent that you, uh, well, I guess if I understand. Creating some sort of, um, bumpers or rails around.
Yeah, you got it. Are they going to, you got it, Anthony, you're really, are they going to, they, do they have to go to planning first? Or can they just go to the town council and? You know, this is an elected body, like I feel comfortable with people going to them. First for their request and being completely vetted through them. Before it goes to the town council, who I, I don't see, you know. Spending as much time on it as the planning board for specific requests.
Yeah, so the the planning aspects are governed by by state law, um, uh, chapter forty eight, so. Um, the, it, it, that's one of the reasons that it goes to the planning board. It has to go to the planning board under, under chapter forty eight. So those dynamics. Sort of won't change, um, under the proposed, um, charter, um. So I, and 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 I would. I guess I haven't, I I'm hesitant to sort of give a firm answer because I haven't, uh, I don't wanna say I have all the full research on it, but. I I don't think that you have the ability through the charter to change how forty eight works at the local level. Um, or or even if you proposed it, um, because it's a special act, I think it would be met with. Uh, skepticism, uh, when it went to the, to the legislature. So. Under the, under the current charter, it would be. Uh, under the land use piece kind of business as usual, and then the change would be the pieces. So it'd be the town council instead of the town meeting. And then if you kept your planning board elected, it would essentially be the same. They'd be an elected planning board and they would talk to the town council, the same way they would have talked to, well, probably not the same, but they would have talked to the town meeting, but. They'd be sending back the same information, but to a body that's meeting more frequently, um, in in seeing these issues.
Yeah, okay, I think, I mean, I. I understand that. A little better. But I just didn't know, that'll be the thing that really trips everybody up if we ever get this thing to a town meeting vote and they discuss it. This, this will take three nights, I assure you.
Mel, did you want to add anything there? I don't know if you.
No, no, go ahead.
But I was looking really carefully, looking at our, our last town meeting warrant. All of the zoning articles are either made through motion by the planning board for the action. Or they're all. Or the motions are made by the finance committee with a planning board comment in the case of a citizen petition.
Right, that's how it is now. So they take, I mean, all, they take up like half the motions in our, in our warrant now.
So I think that would still say the same.
Yeah, I just, like, for example, to compare this to HGC. If HGC doesn't like, if the, if a citizen doesn't like what HGC did, they can appeal it to the town council and that comes up to the select board. A little more frequently than it used to, um. And if. But in this instance, it's not gonna be like that. You're gonna go and whether, I mean, if. Uh, what I'm saying is the planning boards, it's just a recommendation. It's not like they can vote it down. That that's just their recommendation and then it's gonna go to the town council. It's not like you can stop it at the planning board level. Let get a negative recommendation and then not get a hearing from the town council. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's right. The, 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 the planning board is, um, does not have any more or less authority than they have now.
The, the conversation did actually, and I, and I'm sort of, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna say I'm hesitant to bring it up, but I guess I, I would point out to you that. Um, again, all this stuff runs under forty eight and we're not, we're not really situated to be advisors on sort of. The complex law of land use in Massachusetts, but one thing that I think would change, um. Well, I, I don't know how often it'll happen, but. Under forty eight, the town council has the ability to craft and submit, um, zone changes or amendments to the zoning article. Um, so, you know, counselor could say, you know, this is important to me or my constituents and I want to propose this change to. This zone or create a new zone or whatever. So that would be one thing that would be, I would just like, wanted to point that out for you. That's one thing that would be different from your town meeting to now is that at any meeting, in theory. A town counselor could submit a proposal. It would have to follow the same process of getting a recommendation from the planning board, but they, they do have that, uh, mobility.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, okay.
Alright, well.
I'm looking at the participation in the planning boards, one point four, and I think. Over the years, I recall, I did first. Uh, set of opinions. On the planning board and I see no reason to change. What we're doing, so I don't want that's the consensus, but.
I think it's fine, so, you know. Anyone else?
So, our notes, we're gonna keep this the same, um, as the proposed language, okay?
Yes.
Um, wait, wait, go, can you go back up a little thing? So the associate members, it says appointed by town manager. Are we saying council though? Are we saying council though? Isn't that how it is?
Yeah, I think.
So we want to keep it so that the associates are appointed by the council. Is the select board certain, doesn't it, okay?
Yes, so same applies for the.
I, I didn't catch that, but there's that, that also, first, a historic district commission there, B. So I don't know, I will have to verify, clarify whether that's correct.
Yeah, I, I, I think the comment in general is that we're looking to have consistent process, and it sounds like. That consistent process would be appointed by the town council. Yes, Pat.
I just wanted to point out that in these, I, I think what the intention was where, where something was appointed by the select board. They're the executive branch, and now the town manager becomes the, the executive branch, so um. There was an attempt to transfer that over and keep it from one executive branch to the next executive branch. So um, changing it then to the town council then gives legislative branch approval over um. What may be an executive branch function, so. I just want you to understand that caveat, that it's not keeping it the same. But from changing it from the select board to the town council, because the town council is no longer going to be the executive branch. Um, and I think many towns have. The, and, and obviously, um, if you want to keep it this, you, you get to make these decisions. Um, but just to understand the background of that, um. The, the executive branch is often um having, having a town manager. In this city-like government, um, sometimes it is giving authority to the town manager to assemble their team of advisors. Um, rather than having town council, which is the legislative branch, having that extra input. On the executive branch advisors, so um. Obviously, you get to choose what path you want to take in the appointment, and we should make it consistent. But it's not exactly transferring it over from select board to town council, because they're different branches of government.
Thank you, Pat, I, I tried to make this point earlier. That there are advisory boards to the executive, and there are probably advisory boards to legislative. And um, maybe we should differentiate between the two, because. Like Sha, for instance, and I don't know a lot about Sha, but if you're, if you're advising the executive, the regulator. So think of the executive as the regulator, which is gonna take the laws and enforce them. And then, right, so you're, you're advising the regulator. And then you have people who are gonna advise the legislature, probably. Somewhat like planning, because you're making a recommendation for planning legislation, for land use legislation. And again, I'm making a stab at the dark, but those are separate functions. And maybe we should think of those in terms of separate functions and say, look, like, maybe this person should be able to. Pick their regulators, and maybe this, this group should be able to pick the people that are advising that. Does that make sense? I think we gotta keep that on line two. I mean, does it make sense for planning? Jill, does that make sense to you? Because like, if you're, if you're on the thing com and you're, you're giving recommendations for budget items. Right, you're giving those. Essentially, you're gonna go from advising the select board, who selects you, to advising the um. The, the town council on budgetary levels.
I, I, I understand the difference, and I, I think it's a, a really valid point. I guess what I'm saying, I mean, the, well, in the U S senate, they also make a lot of appointments about. Uh advisors, so I don't really have a problem with the legislative branch making those appointments personally. And because I think that's the way we've been doing things, and it's important to have this transparency, I'm comfortable with it. If you want to tell me the town manager wants to come and present people and do it that way, I don't know, I think it, I think it politicizes the town manager. And this actually um protects the town manager, so they can do their job and be less political.
Yes, the, the trade off that I see is Jeff's system, because you have a ratification process. So if you don't like the politics, then the ratification process is there as a check. Uh, on these occasions. So that could be, that could be a compromise in the, in the case of Sha or um some of these point of course.
I hear that, I do, I, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll think about it a little bit more, um. I, I think it's a big change for the Highlands, so maybe it's, maybe that's just my initial reaction, as I'm trying to. Not make this such a big change, but it will be a big change, so.
Yeah. And, and our group talking about it as it comes up is our job, so that people can. Think along with us about what this all will be like and how it will, how it will uh affect.
Yeah, I just, um, I think this discussion is really helpful. Um, and also I think we should remember that the fewer changes we make. Perhaps the more acceptable our proposal will be, so I think we have to have a balance. Between making really good suggestions for change and also trying to keep our eye on. And what town meeting and our proposals acceptance. So there's a delicate balance that's going on here now.
I, I, sorry, sorry, I agree with that, and also, I, I also want to give the voters much. Power, because if you're taking away the legislative, uh, the ability to participate directly. In the legislative, when you give them, I mean, supplement with, like control. About participation of it. But there are some things that um. That are just not functional legislature. Right, and, and they kind of actually need to be. Like Sha, for instance, like, somebody comes to the board with a complaint about, uh, fishing practice. Okay, and that's surely reg, that's purely regulatory. That's not something that's, you know, maybe there's an existing law that just needs to be enforced. Well, then that has to go to the executive, that's not gonna go to the legislature.
All right, Lucy.
All right, yeah, so I'm, I, I've always been thinking all along, like, the town manager for going to a town council, not town manager was like. That, but it's number one person, and the town council wasn't going to get as much work. Because it's all on the town manager, and we're gonna have a good, strong town manager, that's the way I thought. I think that's what I. Was led to the need, that it's a town, like the town manager makes a lot of decisions. But now it seems like what today's meeting, that the town council is gonna be. I just wanted to get it straight, you know?
I think we do too. I think that's fair, all right, Jill?
I guess, you know, it would help me personally if we knew how this process was gonna play out for real, so, for example. Are these groups, these advisory boards, are they just going to report back to our town manager? Or is she gonna have them report directly or give presentations or? Um, you know, independent reviews, for example, those go right to our select board, the way it works now. Is that not what's gonna happen in the future? If we went to a ratified appointment process?
Well, I, I guess for my to sense, I think it depends upon. You know, in the case of advisory board, it, I think Bo's example was just pretty good. It depends upon what they're being asked to advise on, and if it's, you know, enforcement of existing regulations or practices, right? That's a more executive function, but someone come forward and says, we need to. Change regulations because something's not being covered or something that's there. Then you're gonna go drifting to the world of, you know, potential legislation, but I think that there's. A process, and obviously anytime there's legislation too, you know, you have to bring in. You know, staff review with figuring out how that's gonna be implemented, if that change is gonna be in before you can even. Decide if it's feasible to do, so I. It's gonna be a little bit of both for advisory boards, I think where you're looking at regulatory boards. Regulatory boards are quasi legislative bodies, because they can, in a lot of cases. Adopt their own independent legislation, they don't have to rely on the town councils to, you know, like. If the H D C wants to change the rules and regulations, they can change their rules and regulations. Not, and they don't require council approval, or the conservation commission can certainly do that, or uh. The Board of Health, another good example, has the ability to adopt regulations to affect the bylaws that are in place around them. Yes, they could propose a bylaw or require a town meeting adoption to do right now, but. Most of those bylaws create the ability for them to create regulations to make those enforceable. And they're adopted by themselves to do. Most of those also don't have advisory boards that go with it, so. I mean, I, I, I think, I think Bo's idea of looking at it is, you know, which bucket. Do the boards fall in, executive function or legislative function as a majority, I think is a. Seemingly gonna be maybe an exercise that we're gonna have to do.
It's a good point to pursue. So why don't we schedule this for two minutes?
I was just thinking, like, right now, H D C appeals, right, they go to the select board. At their point, I don't know. I'm seeing where the, the crossover now for the town manager essentially is where the select board has been. To now make it the council. I think I just, I, I need to like walk through a couple of examples. So like, if the, if the, the council's appointing the associates, and then they're also hearing an H D C appeal against, I don't know, it's just, it's like two. Embedded in one. I, I, I'm sort of starting to move more towards your, the town manager is the. The appointing in these cases. With the council to veto or ratify as a, and, and I don't know. Might, I'm now getting confused.
I mean, I, I, I think to hop in. I understand the point of not wanting to make it a political process, but it already is.
It is, yeah.
Right, and it is with the, the select board, and I'm not saying that's gonna go away with town manager ratification, but. I think the reason why I brought it up the way I did is there's no. There's no check and balance on it now, right? If you don't like appointments. I guess as a voter, you could say, I didn't like the way that someone on the select board voted for the appointment on this committee. So I'm not going to vote for them when they run again. And then have to remember that for the two years that you're, you're waiting for, for reelection. Or you create a system where the decisions are being made, they're being vetted again in public. And then there's a decision that's made where you're now, two separate groups are making a joint decision. That if one person's getting influenced, or if a couple of members of the council are getting pressured to vote one way or the other. That can try to balance itself out, because you have to succeed through both sides. You're never gonna remove the politics from all of this, it's impossible, but. I think there are ways to try to safeguard the process as much as possible. We can all think about it.
Yeah, I'd like to think about it a little bit longer, I'm not trying to make it less political, there's nothing we can do about that, I'm trying to. Keep the town manager, trying to help them not being perceived as. Quite so political, but if it's just the advisory boards and not the regulatory boards, is that, that's all you are focused on, right, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just flat out say for the record, I have a preference to having all of the regulatory boards elected. Myself, I don't want to skew anyone's opinion, but. I just think that if you have the ability to create legislation on your own. Our legislators should be elected. Just how I personally feel, if people feel differently, that's totally fine, but. I believe if you're entrusted by the public to be able to create the rules in which we all operate, those people should be selected by the public. It's just. My personal thing.
We'll just keep pursuing that, and maybe we can move on to.
This is where we need Joe, he's a much faster whip cracker than me, I think we're, we're on to community preservation committee on the list.
And, I mean, it sounds like there's some conversation around the associate members for um, planning board, but it's being tabled for next meeting.
Yes, great, okay. I think it's part of the larger conversation for having.
So the community preservation committee is uh in the charter in the same way as uh some of the other provisions. Uh, again, it's under a, it's governed by state law, um, that's how Nantucket has enacted it, so this is a reference to um, um. The state law that creates um the community preservation committee, um, the numbers for the committee aren't in here, because the state law allows for um. An upper and lower limit as to the members of the committee.
How are they selected, what's the pursuant to forty four being?
So they're, they're elected, all, all of the boards here are elected boards.
Okay.
Mister Chair.
Yes, now.
Uh, just a clarification, I, I sit on CPC as a select board rep, two are elected at large, and the rest are representatives from other boards, land bank. H D C, Concom, et cetera.
I agree. Or any other comments on CPC? All right, water commissioners.
So this is the water commission. This is one that uh goes back, um, well, um, to be. Back to the beginning of the sort of twentieth century, um, so this is a sort of cobbled together from a number of special acts. Um, for Nantucket, um, but again, at a high level, the most important part is a five-member board elected from members at large. For overlapping two-year terms, um. And these powers and, and uh, uh, the power and authority. Is basically what is in the um town special acts, um, as, that's been created over time, um. Which I think there was, there are several issues here relative to their power, because they are, um. They have significant power in terms of entering the contracts um around the water, um. Maintaining infrastructure, things of that nature, so there's some detail in here about their. Contract and, and things of that nature, um, that. The committee way may want to modify, I don't, I don't know if there have been issues in, in uh Nantucket. Around this, I know there was some discussion about a combined water sewer, um, but at a high level. It's elected as it, it's structured to be elected as is now, five members at large with overlapping terms.
Yes, Curtis.
Um, as, as a lawyer commissioner, and I'm not speaking officially as a commissioner. But there has been discussion about a joint water sewer commission. And um, because every time you put in a sewer, we replace water, we dig up, and. So it, it's very closely integrated, and I read someplace in the last couple of days. That David Gray is talking about expanding and combining by adding a couple of members.
Expanding and combining by adding a couple members. Um from what's now the sewer commission. The sewer commission is the select board at present time. So there is discussion about a combined water sewer commission. I don't know where it's going, I'm just for the record. Pointing out that it's on the table.
Anyone else?
Yep, Jeff.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see it.
This one is a little bit interesting. Because with the select board being the sewer commission. Um I. You know, when places go on town sewer on Nantucket, they have um they're allowed to have as. Really endless bedrooms. So that becomes a big political discussion on the island. Um uh all for going on town sewer here, but. In that vein, we also have a planning board that would like recommend changing zoning. Um and they would change zoning. So with that, um you know, I just. Kind of wonder introducing a third board to in that discussion seems a little bit. Uh little confusing to me. I just wanna talk about it because I think we should, and maybe today's not the day to talk about it, but uh.
I don't disagree with the need to talk about it. The question is. Uh what where does the sewer commission come from? So you need to create a sewer commission or somehow there that has to be brought into the equation. So how it's done, it just has to be on the agenda.
Sure, could have that for next time.
I think that would be good. Maybe we could have. David come or he could tell us his thoughts. And and Mark Willitt.
Any other comments on?
No, I I'd like to invite the two. Directors to come and talk about it. Give us a give us a roadmap.
We can invite them for next time.
I don't know if there is a roadmap yet because we're talking about taking the enterprise fund. And then like town managed. Entity. And then you have to take it, you have to. Form ultimately a new commission, so. And we have no idea what that commission would be. Or what it would look like, so I mean. Does it work currently?
Nope, I we like it. But the big thing is. Um when you do a sewer thing, there's all the bonding issues. There's a tremendous town involvement in the funding. That is very complex. And I don't have any answers to that, Bo. I wish. Somebody should tell us. That's why I think maybe having the two directors come and talk to us would be helpful.
Just a quick question for Collins Center. Is that something too where? Looking at combination of water and sewer could be part of the council's goal as a transition plan too? Would be to conduct that analysis? I thought I liked kicking the can down the road, but.
Yes, uh yeah, that that could be part of the uh analysis. I guess I'd be curious. Because there was some discussion about, do you wanna language in here about creating a sewer commissioner to the charter? A combined um water and sewer commission or. Uh the water commission, which is currently, again, the reason it's we're talking about is because it's elected. It it appears on the ballot um for Nantucket at the annual elections. Um and then there could be a um a recommendation in the transition provisions. This again, you won't have a select board.
Yeah, I I think the short answer to that, Anthony, to speak for the group is, I think we would like to gather some more information on. Sewer commission specifically before we make that decision.
That's incredibly loaded question. Because obviously, there's a lot of money involved in combining two um major. Uh entities like that. And yeah, we would have to. We would have to defer to like there.
We're gonna inject ourselves into that conversation that's like.
I was curious, are are we overreaching? I mean, it's very important to hear what they're doing. But is that part of our purview to start creating other commissions? Or joining commissions? Are we overreaching or is is this? I it's a question. What do you think?
It's a commission that, oh, sorry, it's a commission that exists. The sewer commission is an existing commission. And I think, and I'll also, I don't think it's overreaching to have the discussion just for the sense that at some point. If the select board is going away and they're the current sewer commissioners, we have to decide where their function as sewer commissioners. Goes to list. Yes, Caroline, sorry. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to make those decisions, so. Or we kick the can on the transition plan. Anyone else have anything on this? I know this is the last one.
Clarification again, and just because I'm out there in the public talking about it, but. So like the select board is gonna be, the town council is gonna be an extension of the select board. That's kind of rolled over, is that correct?
No, no.
So it's gonna be all new elected, nine new elected people. So the select board will be done and then it'll be not.
The select board is the executive, the town council is the legislature.
Yes, yeah, I know, but at one, but so the select board, if this happens like next year, so the select board just. Crumbles and then we're gonna let nine of you.
Now, I think we would have to work out how that would transition from one form to the other. No, I I think it'll be part of it. I think we'll probably talk about that with Collins as part of.
The town manager to like to roll over or is that gonna be, is it just gonna be, how how does it work, I guess?
I think the short answer to that is the the select board obviously goes away and their functions as the executive. Will get divvied up between the town manager and in some cases will go to the town council. Um how that town council is initially constituted. Isn't something that we've discussed right to date, other than. Generalities and numbers where I think we're recommending, you know, nine counselors to be there. Um and then one of the duties as town council is obviously, they get to. Appoint and contract the town manager through there too. I think if in the transition when that's discussed. How that will go with existing personnel for town manager and so on board and how that will will play into all of that. I think will have to be something that's put together as far as any transition plan goes, but. I know that's later on the work plan for us to discuss.
Because right now the select board is the inside of the branch as far as the thing, but it sounds like today that the council is gonna get a lot of.
So, yes.
So then town manager, yeah.
Well, Pat had her hand raised, and I'm I'm very curious what the Collins Center would respond with.
Sure, right, yeah.
I was just going to add that um we will discuss and lay out a transition plan. Um there are many options as far as um you know, specifically with the town council and the select board. Um we may recommend that the new town council be elected a little bit early. And continue to work with the select board until a certain date at which time the select board goes away and the town council picks it up. Um but we we will have a detailed transition plan and there are many options about how this can be done. Um so we'll talk through it and talk what makes sense. Um oftentimes. Some of these positions can be, you know, some of the positions that aren't affected. Um may just continue, but like school committee to continue to be on the same um. On this election schedule. Uh there may be some changes, but we'll go into detail when we get to the transition portion of the charter.
Any other?
I'll make comment that in the uh. That's like a magazine article reviews that said there's a quote or comment made. By I guess Joe Grouse saying. We would take the current select board and roll them over into the town council or positions. And given that they are two different functions. I think that I feel strongly now that that would be very confusing as we make a transition. For uh in the form of government, and so I feel that that wouldn't be seemly.
That was my recommendation and um it was to. Continue the existing select board for the rest of their term, so you'd still stagger. But you would have some experience. And um I I think that's a very valid point to discuss, but that that was a proposal that I made.
I think we'll get to that. Transition plans. Alright, seeing as we're already at ten after five, is there any other?
I have a comment. I've I've told our chairman that I was gonna make this comment. I would like to uh recommend that we set as an objective. Concluding the discussion with Collins within sixty days. So that we can have. Whatever rough stuff we have together in time to go to KP Law. To modify or develop a charter with us or to adapt a charter that Collins helps us with. So that we can be sure to get on the agenda if we have to go as a citizens article. If we don't have to go as a citizens article, then we can defer a little longer. But um I I told Joe that I would bring this up to the committee sixty more days here. And by then we should have the draft that we wanna present to KP Law for review and and to tune up. It's just a comment, you know.
Well, we can add that discussion to the agenda for next. I think that's fair. Any other questions?
Uh yeah, I just want to remind everybody the select board actually has the review of the annual town meeting survey results that they're gonna have presented to them tonight. At their meeting when they convene in twenty three minutes.
I have it and they're not doing it. They deferred it to September eleven. It was on the uh agenda that went out today. They're not doing it.
Oh, they did update agenda today?
Well, they just said that they're deferring it. Uh Brooke said she wanted to defer this report until the eleventh.
It's still in the packet. Excuse me, guys, I'm tired. They still in the packet if you all wanna read it, and the Collins Center should read it especially.
I think Joe.
Joe sent it out, yeah. So we'll make sure everyone gets it. Alright, move with German. Alright, Curtis move with German.
Second. Back on Zoom.
Alright, well, we have most on the table, all in favor of Curtis. Hi, Rachel. Caroline, Bo, Jill. Jeff votes on. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.